I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council Meeting, Monday, March 17th, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call, Madam Secretary.
Councilor Lozo.
Present.
Councilor Montigny.
Present.
Councilor Chenier.
Present.
Councilor Daniel.
Present.
Councilor Dow.
Present.
Councilor Kelly.
Present.
Councilor Marquetti.
Present.
Councilor Ortiz.
Excuse?
Councilor Rivas.
Present.
We have a call room. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Considered Except, Meeting Minutes of March 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Chenier. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? If not, all in favor? Opposed? The unanimous vote, President. Moving on to Subcommittee Reports, Agenda Item Number Four, Department of Public Works, Councilor Chenier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on Thursday night, and we recommended some of the articles in tonight's agenda by the Subcommittee in the Hall.
Moving on to Education Services, Councilor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting last Monday, and there are a few items on tonight's agenda.
Planning and Development, Councilor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, we had a meeting on Wednesday, March 12th, and Items 15, 16, 17, and 20 on tonight's agenda will be discussed.
Thank you. Moving on to Protections of Person's Property, Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair, to you. We have a meeting last week. We have a few items that will be discussed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, General Government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a meeting on Wednesday, March 12th, last week, and we considered Items 23, 24, and 25 on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Moving on to Chairman's Announcements. I have a sad announcement tonight. Our Finance Director, Michelle Hill, lost her husband and passed on, and I'd just like Andrew Hill, 52 years old. I'd just like to have everybody have a moment of silence for Andrew Hill. Thank you very much. Moving on to, on a happier note, I'd just like to extend a Happy St. Patrick's Day to the town of Southbridge and its people. I think Council Dow wins the Best Dress Counselor for St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
Moving on to Town Manager's Announcements, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, through you. First off, this is a letter from the Suffrages Retirement Board to the Town Council regarding the 3% COLA notification. They've asked that I read this publicly. Dear Chairman Lozo, every year the Suffrages Retirement Board has a public meeting to consider granting a Cost of Living Adjustment COLA to retirees pursuant to General Law Chapter 32, Section 103(c) or 103.i., and to determine the amount increased COLA up to 3%. For the past several years, the Board has approved the 3% COLA increase. Under the statute, Peric reports to the General Court the competition of the increase in the United States Consumer Price Index in the previous year by the Commission of Social Security. Any such increase is based on the Consumer Price Index for Urban Wage earners and Clerical Workers, the CPI-w. This index is used annually to adjust benefits paid to Social Security retirees and beneficiaries. This year, the Social Security Administration has announced that the latest Cost of Living Adjustment COLA is 2.5%. The Board is required to send notification to the legislative body if they are considering increasing that percentage up to 3%. At their Board meeting on February 27th, 2025, the Board voted to consider increasing this percentage up to 3% to be voted on at the April meeting, and hereby notify with this notice to the legislative body. The Board also voted to set the COLA meeting for April 24th, 2025. If you have any questions, please contact the Retirement Office. Sincerely, Yolanda Alvarado Administrator. Just to the Southbridge residents, reminded that the winter parking ban does remain in effect until April 1st, 2025. The DPW is asking that we maintain the alternative side parking, so please park on the opposite side or the side that you're supposed to, as they are trying to get a jump on the sweeping. They've been out for a couple times, and they like to get as much done as they can, so if you could just adhere to the one-sided parking in those neighborhoods so that they can continue those efforts. Just an announcement on the Friends of the Suffrages Trails. On April 10th, 2025, the Friends will be having a meet and greet at the Jacob Edwards Library in the Piapi Room, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. I did meet with Ray Arnold, the Chair of the Trail Committee today, and we had a good conversation about all the trails and how they want to continue the mission to keep those up to the upkeep as we have the additional trails, and looking for some supplies and materials that I'll bring forward to the Council on that at a later date. In regards to the curbside updates, and curbside will begin fully advertising this as we approach each event. However, we have been getting calls, leaf, and yard waste. Curbside pickout will begin on April 21st. That will go through May 31st. The yard waste, again, in paper brown paper bags or open containers on the day of your collection. A household hazardous waste collection event will be held this year on May 3rd from 9:00 to 1:00 at DPW on 185 Gulfwood Road. And on May 17th, here at the Town Hall, will start for Earth Day to Beautify Southbridge. That will go from 8:30 AM until noon on a rain date of May 18th. If you are interested in attending, please come and attend. And just as we start to ramp up the nice weather, our road projects will be commencing. The East Main Street project has begun back in full swing. Please, if you're able to, take alternate routes. There is no easy way to get through, but if you know of alternate routes or you don't have to go through the section of town between 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday, just travel accordingly, but they are doing their best to maintain traffic and get that done. It's anticipated that we'll get this job done by June, the end of June, so it'll be a short period of time, but it's a great project to have completed. Rail trail work continues. That will continue through the summer. We are coordinating with the TIP project for the downtown area. River Crane, that work will start commencing as well, so we have a lot of major road construction that'll be happening in the downtown area. We did hold a meeting with National Grid, Chief Woodson, PEG, BHB, and Butch Jackson to discuss the additional gas work that's being completed by the gas companies. So in addition to our road work, the gas company will be doing work, so we are coordinating, trying to make sure that their crews are not in the areas of our work, so that we try to limit the congestion in certain areas, but we're working together to make sure that we minimize as much of an impact as we have, and that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentations, Town Manager Substance Abuse. Council Presentation by Deputy Chief Jose Ding.
Good evening, and thank you, Councilor Chair, for having us.
Let me start over.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilor Chair, for having me, Town Council, Town Manager, and everyone else. Today, I want to talk about an epidemic that has deeply affected families, communities, and has touched us all. The opioid-related overdose deaths globally and in Massachusetts, but specifically in our community, has devastated many families through the years, taking fathers, brothers, sons, a mother, a daughter, a sister, a loved one. This epidemic has touched us all in so many ways. When I was asked to be the Chair of this committee, I truly didn't know the effect it had on all of us. 2017, 91 calls for overdose, six dead, 85 revived by Narcan. Just think if there was no Narcan at that time, we would have lost 91 lives that year. 2019, 16 deaths. 2020, 14 deaths. 2023, four deaths, 42 saves. March 2024, 10 overdose calls in one month, two dead, eight saved. That's a brief look into the lives that were taken and saved in our community. That March, I remember a young man overdosing three different times in one weekend. We saved him twice. I bring you these stats just so you can realize the importance of prevention. Our Police Department and Fire Department are very proactive. We started as a PD administering Narcan back in 2013, one of the first mass PDs to do so. Fire started way before us. The Fire and Police have saved hundreds of lives in those past years. The community and resources that we have around us have saved so many more. Without Narcan, I could only imagine, but this is just a reversal until the next overdose. Today, I would like to present what the Town Manager Substance Abuse Council has done, and with the approval of the Council, is preparing to do. If you look at the PowerPoint, in 2016, the Town Manager formed a committee to address the opioid and overdose epidemic. The committee was formed with community professionals and experts in the field. Since 2016, the committee has worked hard to educate and prevent substance abuse and overdoses in our community. As you can see with our mission statement, we are, the Substance Abuse Committee is dedicated to preventing, reducing, and addressing substance abuse within our community. Through education, support, and intervention, we strive to foster a healthier, safer, and drug-free community. Okay, just a brief history on the committee. Back in 2026, we originally started with a budget of $25,000. Not every year, just a budget of $25,000 to address the epidemic. We stretched that funding for over six years. We provided municipal buildings and schools with brochure racks containing prevention resources and flyers. We hung two billboards on Central Street. As you can see by that picture, we actually put posters on our parks as well that year. We brought numerous speakers to our school. Chris Heron, one of the past Celtics player who suffered from substance abuse, came to our schools three times, and we paid for them, addressing thousands of students. We hosted a Town Hall Forum with experts from our own community and members from our own community. We established a TIP 401 app for smartphones, which I'll throw a plug in for that later on. We funded numerous YMCA teen nights for our youth, and we hosted many community fairs. Now, if you take a look, these are all the professionals that are on our committee now, and most of them are, there's a couple here, if you would like to stand just so I could see you and recognize you. So we've, Jasmine, and actually, I'll start with that. Jasmine has probably been with me since 2017, and now she's a Town Counselor. Our Town Manager was back then, too. Even our Fire Chief was on the committee until Deputy Chief Hewlick took over. So as you could see, we have a great resource there alone, just the networking that we have with this committee, that we could attach to caseworkers, we could attach to Spectrum, we could attach to anybody, and we have their expertise on the committee. So that's huge. And I think this committee was made for such a time as this, because recently, because of all the overdose deaths in the lawsuits, Massachusetts itself got awarded over a billion dollars to return back to addiction and prevention, harm reduction, and treatment. So with that said, they actually, because the money is so vast in Massachusetts, they actually created what's called the opioid abatement partnership. So they actually monitor what each town does, and I gave you guys all a handout, there's a little cheat sheet. It shows us what we have to do as a community to spend this money, and how we have to address certain things. It has to, we can't surplant it, we have to create new programs, et cetera. So this care program, and if you receive over $35,000, which we're going to every year until the foreseeable future, we have to report it back to Massachusetts, this care program, on what we spent the money on. So it's great that we have this committee already established, and we hit the ground running. We had a meeting this morning where we broke our committee down into four different subcommittees. So our approach to fight this battle is going to be that we're gonna, like we did in the past, we're going to bring events to prevent substance abuse through education and awareness. We're going to add programming. We're going to add training to our community, even our first responders, even our municipalities, our municipality workers. We could have them train in certain things. Narcan has saved so many lives, and we're looking as a committee to put on a Narcan training. And they hear me say this in every meeting, you know, Narcan is kind of a Band-Aid to the next overdose, because you need to figure out what's causing the addiction, et cetera, and heal the addiction, then just keep giving them Narcan, because one weekend, we Narcan a person three times, you know, we only saved them twice. So that's the end result, it's going to be an overdose. And the fourth subcommittee will be training, I mean, reporting, because we have to report as a community what we're spending the money on. Little commercial break here. If you guys haven't downloaded the app, TIP 401, Southbridge PD, this is an app that started with the program back in 2016. You could actually send a tip to the Southbridge Police, and we cannot trace this. You know, no matter what you send it from your phone, we have no access of tracing it. It's anonymous. You could tell us, you know, somebody's selling drugs next door, you could tell us, you know, loud noise complaint. This app has been very useful for us. We've solved armed robberies, identify people in armed robberies, and things of that nature. I just got a TIP 401 as I sat there as fireworks go off, so it's a very useful tool. If more citizens download it and use it, it'll be very effective, and it's a good tool we have. You know, sometimes you don't want to call on your neighbor, so that's the way you just send it, so they don't know who called. This is a map, and one thing about the care program or the abatement program, they want to be very transparent to the public. This actually tells, you just click on here, you click on the town, you can click on any town, any 351 communities, and they'll tell you how much money they received. Some people receive $5,000, you know, others receive a lot more, the bigger cities. But Southbridge is on there, and that's what we're receiving to date, so that's why we formed four committees, so we could start hitting the ground running and spending the money on useful things. So with that said, I have my committee here, they're the experts, not me. If you have any questions that we could answer, or any concerns, any ideas, throw ideas our way, what programs you want to see, et cetera, we'll go from there. Any questions?
I just want to thank the Deputy Chief, because he has been really the spearhead of this program since its inception, back in the days of former Town Manager Ron San Angelo. He's been, he's kind of got tasked with running the program through a variety of different Town Managers. I think by his leadership and the group that we have, we're well positioned to meet the challenges of this funding, to put forward the best use of these dollars to our community. If we, Deputy Chief and I have attended many of the actual care program now, has webinars and trainings, and we are ahead of many communities. While we haven't spent any money yet, we are really in the planning stages of this, but we are far ahead of other communities, and our goal, from my perspective, is to really, this year, build the building blocks and put some programs out, and then how do we deliver this so it's sustainable, because there will be an end to the funds that come. So whatever programs we put in place, we want to make sure that it's sustainable for the future, and we can do that in a variety of ways, and I think it's great that we have set up these committees to be able to look throughout the community and have asked our partners to reach out to those that they work with. We're very fortunate to have that, and I look forward to the great future that we have with this program, and thank everybody that participates, because we do have quite a broad spectrum of individuals on the committee that work with a lot of our members of our community, our residents that suffer from this kind of substance abuse and other issues, and we are very fortunate with the agencies that we have to be able to reach out to them. And we have a lot of great ideas, and I think in the near future, we'll have a lot to bring to the table to show the town. So thank you.
And through you, Chair.
I'd like to take a second just to thank Deputy Chief Dinghy and your team. This is a community problem, and you have the team that's put together to work on it, and I know that the Southbridge Town Council as a whole is behind you 110%, and as funding dwindles, it should be a priority, this council, to continue to deal with the community problem that we have, especially with the team that we do have assembled already. Job well done to all the players. Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Since you have the funding from the state, is there any plans to share some of that funding with some of the social service groups in town? Because I know the police have their hands full, some of these overdoses and things, it just seems to me that the Police Department really is not equipped to deal with all of that. Some of it, yes, but not all of it. So is there a plan to share it with different social service groups in Southbridge?
Absolutely. Over the years, I've even struggled through COVID 2020, keeping this group together. This group, so if you look at the screen, it's a bunch of professionals, there are local agencies that already do the work. We even have recovery coaches on here, we have social workers, we have case managers, we have healthy families involved, YMCA. So this is a great network that even me and the Town Manager talked, that we needed to keep this network together, because they carry so many resources beyond the PD, beyond the Fire Department, beyond this town. And they come with ideas, they already have established programs that we're going to help, you know, supplement and get off the ground. So yes, we do plan to share, and that's why we did four committees. That way, the money could be distributed equally amongst them, and like I said also in the past, I had $25,000 for over five years, so this money won't be spent reckless. We have committee members working on it, making plans, and it's going to get to our community, and it's going to help our community, and we believe that, you know, we educate and we prevent with this committee. And I want to personally thank them for all the work they do. Some of them are on the volunteer time, you know, we spend a lot of hours in committee meetings, and I just want to personally thank you for, you know, showing up to the meetings and helping out. They're a dedicated, great group, and as you can see up there, they're professionals all around.
Any other questions? Council Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Listen, I want to commend all of you for working on this. This is a very serious problem in our communities throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the country, really, but especially in the Commonwealth. I have been working with the Recovery Court in Worcester District Court since 2016, and as the Defense Council Team Member on the Recovery Court, we've had some great success in making sure people get treatment for justice-involved people, typically people who have been chronically justice-involved with multiple cases related to their drug abuse. Drug abuse, this kind of thing is a disease, needs to be treated as such, and it needs to be, and people who are suffering from the disease, you have to understand, they don't have any control over it, and the only thing that works is treatment, really. And I'm just wondering, what resources do you have to make sure people that you come in contact with, people who are overdosing, to direct them to, and ensure that they get appropriate treatment in the community?
Well, we have multiple programs that we, actually, probably this funding will strengthen now. We used to do the knock and talk. After an overdose, we'll send a police officer, a social worker, to the door of that person that overdosed, and try to convince them to get treatment. We also implement a Section 35. When applicable, we'll go right to the judge and say this person's overdosing, and we'll get them committed immediately. You know, we have the care program in town as well, so we have, you know, multiple resources. We have the hospital in town, a recovery hospital, too. UMass Harrington helps us out. Spectrum is on our board as well. They, you know, have the methadone clinic, et cetera, in town, so we have a lot of access to a lot of resources, and that's one thing we want to do as a committee, is strengthen all those resources, and basically, when somebody overdoses, that's basically the alarm, saying, I mean, you're lucky you didn't die. So at this point, you either get help, or you will die. And with, the problem with fentanyl now is, if you guys are familiar with fentanyl, it just takes a grain of salt to overdose you, you know. You could be searching a car as a police officer just opened the trunk, or going to somebody's house, and you breathe it in, and you overdose, and now you're dying because of somebody's, you know, cutting the drugs with that agent. So fentanyl is a very dangerous drug, and now even smoking a joint might kill you and overdose you. So people have to be careful, we have to get education out there, and we have to strengthen the resources we already have, and now we have, you know, quite the bank to do that. We never, ever had that kind of money to try to do these resources. So I just want to get the right people in place. It's not me, it's the resources we have here to maybe strengthen Southbridge. There's no secret that Southbridge has that issue, like every other community, but we have to take care of our own. I bleed red.
Any other questions? Council Rivas.
Not a question, just wanted to, you know, uplift all of the work that Deputy Chief Dinghy, over the years, we've seen a lot of turnover in all many different organizations, but just the commitment of not only the organizations, but the chief and the deputy chief of the Fire Department, and really keeping this group together and making sure that whatever turnover there was, either in the school or in an organization, that we always had representation from the experts. And I'm really excited that we have Bridge to Hope, they're here today, and just such a great new resource in our community, and I look forward to working on programming that we can come up with in our program subcommittee, because prevention and education, those are the ways to really dig in and try to help our community, again, with this disease, and try to, you know, try to help people in our community, and so, and all of the experts. I didn't want to, you know, I don't want to name everybody, but I wanted to call them out, because they're new to our community and such a valuable resource right now. But thank you to all of you. This is, you know, the meetings, it's just another meeting, and a lot of the players, a lot of the people that are in these meetings are in a lot of different organizations and coalitions, so I appreciate the time that people take to come in and make sure that, you know, they are putting all of this effort into helping the residents in our community. So thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? If not, thank you very much. Moving on to Citizens Forum. Agenda Item Number Eight, are there any citizens that would like to address the Southbridge Town Council on any issue that's not on the agenda tonight?
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill, and kudos to Joe for his shirt, but I'm going to talk about another holiday, vernal equinox, which officially, spring begins on Thursday. Bulbs are popping up, and soon we will hear the chorus of frogs from vernal pools. These are important sources of biodiversity, dragonflies, moths, bees, and other insects, turtles, frogs, salamanders. turtles, frogs, salamanders, snakes. Migrating birds and mammals use vernal pools as a welcome resting spot. But there's no fish, there are no fish in vernal pools as they dry up by midsummer. Biodiversity is a buzzword now, but don't be mystified by it. It's our ecology and biodiversity helps us humans by cleaning the water, eating pests, making the soil and air healthy. And there is a connection between biodiversity and climate change. Another new buzz phrase is nature-based solutions. This is a natural one that should be protected, vernal pools. Protecting biodiversity is, as Adriana De Palma and Andy Purvis say in their essay, terrestrial biodiversity, restoring high carbon, high biodiversity ecosystems is a true and urgent nature-based solution. If you think you have a vernal pool, contact me or anybody on the Southbridge Conservation Commission, like Kevin there, and we will help to identify it and protect it. So, happy vernal equinox and next month, Earth Day and Arbor Day and get ready for No Mo May. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take your name, Andy Russ.
Andrew Murch, 101 High Street, second floor. I will be speaking to you on behalf of the school committee, as the majority have joined me this evening. I wanted to share an announcement from the commissioner's office with the council and the town. An excerpt from this, from a letter we received. Since August of 2024, the school committee has worked to implement the action steps in Phase One of the plan with support from a consultant provided by the department. Phase One activities have included training on school committee responsibilities, collaborative meetings with the SPS receiver, and advocacy for the school district and the community. Based on feedback from the receiver and the department's consultant, I am pleased to announce that my decision that the school committee may proceed to implement Phase Two of the capacity building plan. Phase Two actions include additional trainings in specific areas of the school committee performance and further collaborative discussion with SP, with the SPS receiver. I would like to thank all who have contributed to the school committee's ongoing capacity building efforts, including members of the state delegation, the school committee, Southbridge Public Schools, and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. We strongly urge all municipal leaders and community stakeholders to actively support this work and not create undue distractions from the school committee as it builds its capacity to resume governance of the district. While the school committee eventually will hold the statutory governance responsibilities for the district, all municipal leaders share responsibility for fostering the positive climate of collaboration that is needed to improve outcomes for all Southbridge students. The department looks forward to continuing to support the Southbridge School Committee's progress in implementing its capacity building plan. As of now, all current members are still, even the new members, are actively trained on charting the course. We have appointed a CPAC liaison, member Davidson, and she has been actively involved with CPAC meetings. Carla has visited, is the first member of the Southbridge School Committee to visit all of the schools in the same fiscal year. So, congratulations to her. And Norma and Maria have been putting their feet in the ground and also visiting the schools. It's a testament to the hard work that this group of people has done and the work with the town council that we hope to continue to collaborate and work with as we continue to move forward, especially in budget season and as we continue to move through the steps of this plan. I, again, up here, I think we all, as the committee agrees, we would encourage every member of the town council to reach out to Dr. Valar's office to schedule a school visit. I recently attended the middle school and high school and it was a great and stark change from one of my first visits. And I would encourage everybody to see the progress that's being made and we will continue to do the hard work that the town of Southbridge has elected us to do. And we wanted to share that news with the council. So, thank you guys for your support and we'll continue to move forward and look to continue to work with you guys.
Mr. Russ, I have the utmost confidence that you are gonna accomplish that mission with the women that are standing behind you. They are strong, they lead, and they make you look good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens at this time that would like to address the town council on any issues not in front of the council?
Thank you, council, for having me. My name's Mike Rorwell, I live on 102 School Street. And I call, I come here in regards to the streets in this town. Now, there's no nice way to say this, downtown has become a dump. All these streets are pathetic. Hamilton Street, I live on School Street, it's a dump. And now you guys, what's another street? Chapin Street, Dresser Street, the street that's right in between the library and the church that goes to Central Mills, another one? Are these on the list? All right, you guys got a street sweeper, correct? And I noticed you got a brand new one. The guy came around my block the other day, all he did is break up rocks because there's nothing but potholes on our street. I waved him down to say it's a waste of our taxpayer money. So, what, you guys use this twice a year? What did you pay for that thing? What did that cost for that?
We actually have two sweepers.
What did it cost for that thing?
Town manager?
I looked them up online, they're like $129,000.
A little more than that.
Well, I'm just saying.
I, I just, let me just address School Street if I could. School Street was brought to our attention, somebody called our office last week.
That was me.
Yep, and we sent our interim DPW director down there to look at it and he's evaluating to come back.
And I lived there for 24 years and I don't even remember them ever paving it. And I don't put salt on my sidewalks because it eats it away. And it's not like we're gonna get another sidewalk anytime soon. And then across from schools, West Street School, on West Street, you guys put, you used to be able to park on the opposing side. Now there's diagonal lines, like you can park there, but there's no sign that says you can't park there. What do those diagonal lines mean?
The diagonal lines mean you can't park there.
Yeah, but there's, I know, I'm just saying, there's no sign there saying you can't park there. So, I, to me, I've never had a solidified answer on that.
If you'd like to make an appointment with my office, call my office, I'll be glad to talk to you about all the roads that are being done and everything else.
Now, this town's rich with history and like you go downtown, half the businesses are gone. I mean, Gordon Music's got tape holding the windows together. And we're next to Sturbridge, who is a very, very prosperous town. Our town is not the same way, in my opinion. I'm not here to cut you people down, I'm just looking at what I see. I grew up in Oxford and I've lived here for, I don't know, 24 years now, and every year it gets worse and worse, in my opinion. And now the street sweeper came through the other day, yesterday, I cleaned that whole corner. And I do it just for the community and the kids, because it's nothing but booze bottles and candy wrappers and suboxin wrappers, I see them all the time. The kids don't need to see this. There's an empty yard right next to me, I find used condoms in the yard. And the guy who owns the property, he's doing nothing with it. Now, is my house perfect? No. But I live alone. I got enough job, I worked 65 hours for the last 12 years of my life to keep a roof over my head. I'm looking to put a roof on it this year and hopefully it happens, you know? But, I don't know. There needs to be motivation or something. You know, do we get taxpayer money from the cannabis facilities? I always heard that we get taxpayer money from the cannabis facilities. Now, there's three of them in town, how much, does that accrue?
If I could help you out with this, if you give me a phone call, I will take you out for a coffee and I will answer every question.
Well, I drink tea.
That you're laying out here because, shh. The thing is, yes, we do get cannabis money, yes, the roads are scheduled, some of the roads can't get done without the gas lines. I could sit here all night long explaining myself. I'd rather do it privately so we could continue doing, you know, the people's business and I would be glad to sit down with you.
Yeah.
And talk about all the town issues because this town is under such turnaround at this point, between the restaurant district, the TIPS project, Hamilton Street's $8 million, Crane Street, East Main Street, Dresser Street, if they ever finish the gas line, they're all on the board. When I walked into the town manager's office and I see building a fire station, dog kennel, roads all listed or what are being done, sidewalks, we sit there and we look, we said, how much more can this council put into the shoe? And I go in there and see the manager and he's delegating and pushing, moving. We deal with procurement laws. We, it's not like we can just go take the money and pay for it. A lot of our money that comes into town are grant-funded, which has a different procedure, which might be a little longer. So, in the big picture, a lot is getting done, a lot is on the board. They were, they didn't do roads for quite a while and a new group of council, councils got on with a different view and then all of a sudden we're trying to do, fit 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. It's tough, but we're gonna do it because we don't have problems, we have solutions. If you have a problem, you tell us, we'll create the solution, we'll work on it. I'm telling you, give me a call.
Now, I'm surprised.
I'll take you out for a coffee and it'll be the best discussion.
I'm surprised, now Dresser Street's named after Chester Dresser, right? If I'm not mistaken?
Say that again?
Dresser Street is probably named after Chester Dresser, right? Who was the first worship master mason? And I know this because I'm very knowledgeable of history. Are the Freemasons trying to do anything about that street? Aren't they about donations?
Donations?
That's what the Freemasons are?
Again, I'd rather talk, I, I'm not supposed to be talking across the floor. Right, I'll write your complaints down and then I'll answer them. I can do them formally or informally.
All right, now you said something about the hazardous waste removal. What date was that, sir?
It'll be announced again on the website and stuff, but the hazardous, household hazardous waste collection event will be held on May 3rd.
Now, do they do asbestos?
No.
All right, all right, because there's still a little bit of asbestos in my house.
No, no asbestos.
And I can't get no one to come down here and get rid of this stuff. So, I'm just curious, you know? That's pretty much all I have to say, you know? I thank you for my time.
Give me a call.
All right.
We'll sit down.
Okay, no problem.
Council Dow.
Excuse me, I know I'm not supposed to talk back. Go check with the building department, the best way to move illegally from your house. Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues not on the agenda? Say your name and address.
Hi there, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. To, if I may, to the former speaker too, you know, years ago, we did a town cleanup. So, I used to do it every single month with volunteers for three years. We picked up more things than you could imagine, all ages from five-year-olds to 80-year-olds helped out. Maybe that's what that area, maybe you could get to the neighbors and try something like that. And the town would take up your trash bags, I'm sure we could organize that if it was a town pickup like we used to do. But, anyway, just something to think about, sometimes you gotta take matters in your own hands, as you're aware. All right. Okay, I hope that didn't take up my time because I got a lot to say. Thank you for here, happy St. Patrick's Day. So, interesting, you know, I come up here occasionally for, for different matters, usually when it's something that I feel really strong about. And so, today, I'm here because I learned of something last week that I wasn't aware of. And I thought if I hadn't heard about it, probably there are many other people in this community that haven't heard about it. And it's, and I think it's pretty important, something that people might have questions about and maybe want to reach out and learn more about. And it was interesting because the TM kind of leaned right in when he mentioned the East Main Street concerns. That is part of what I'm gonna talk about. Mostly, there's a grant opportunity that's out and I think most of you know about it. I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that grant opportunity, but I wanna bring it to the public's attention. It's called the Commonwealth Housing Works Infrastructure Program and it's included in the Community One Stop for Growth Grant Application Process. It's a grant that's administered by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and it's focused on providing assistance for housing development projects. Eligible applicants are all Massachusetts municipalities. They are eligible to be considered under this program. Hence, Southbridge is a municipality that can be considered. And why are you saying, you know, we talk about grants here all the time, Peg Dean does a wonderful job about grants, but I was really shocked last week to find out that this grant was in limbo and hopefully coming forward, it would be fantastic. The eligibility is for activities not limited to design, construction, repair, and other improvements to infrastructure to advance planned or pending housing developments. Well, this particular grant is eligible to help relieve some safety issues that we have in this community and hence, that's what Southbridge Innovation Center is working towards. Currently, you, some of you may or may not be aware that there's a bridge out, there are two bridges in the Big AO complex. One, they call the longer bridge, the smaller bridge, that's that K Street is the small bridge. And for the past year or so, that big bridge has been out. So, that's just one example of a safety concern that exists because that makes that campus, that very large campus, only accessible by one driveway straight through and that is on K Street. K Street is the street that is abutting the development, those apartments, the 48 units that come right out onto East Main Street. And East Main Street has been a cluster until we get that great project done, which is gonna be wonderful. But in the meantime, you've got, you know, 35 or 40 buses that are parked down there, you've got 48 units of one to, how many people in there? We don't really know exactly how many people live there. But there are also 400 employees throughout that campus because there are a lot of businesses back there. Industrial-type businesses along, of course, the other side is the hotel. So, anyway, it's my understanding that this grant is coming forward and I am very much in support of it. It does not, unlike other grants, which I've opposed at times, it does not ask the town to give any money. The, what are they asking? So, so Chip Norton, Southbridge Innovation Center is looking to get this grant and, but they need support from our community. That means our development office would be in support of putting in this grant in their name. So, the initiative, to approve the submission of various funding applications for implementation of the master plan. And then number two, to enter into a master lease agreement to convert the park into public access easement in perpetuity, which is a gain for the town. What does all that mean? Well, here's what they wanna do, they wanna take this $5 million, if they get it, and they want to fix the bridges, they wanna fix the sidewalks within the complex, and they wanna create public, public access. So, without it costing the town any money and keeping the maintenance and in perpetuity, allow people to be able to use the campus, take walks on the, on the walkways and such. So, but it's no money to the town and that's where I come in because I've always been opposed to any grants where the town has to put our hard-earned tax dollars because this money has already been appropriated by the state, our hard-earned tax dollars. But in this case, it's gonna go to a community, why not Southbridge, right? I mean, it's gonna go, they're gonna give this grant to somebody to do exactly what's happening here. And in this case, you've got a development that is planning more housing. That's a yin yang, as I feel on that, but it's already been determined. Back in '21 or '22, there was an overlay allowed. This, it was voted in, actually, February 22 of '21, the American Optimal Flex Overlay. That, that allowed that campus to have residential housing. So, we did that. Now, you've got people living there. Do we not have, to keep them safe, they're residents of Southbridge too? Should we not be concerned about that? So, we got the overlay district, we got housing, there's more housing on the way and we have the opportunity to get these infrastructure issues taken care of without any cost locally and make it safer for the people who live there and the people who are on East Main Street driving or who use that campus for their, for their other business needs. So, having said all of that, I'm trying to think if there was, let's see, I had a few other things in my mind. I would also like the town manager, if possible, to put the master plan infrastructure upgrades paperwork that was provided, since it is a public document because it did come to, I believe, subcommittee. If you could put that up on the website so people have an idea of what's going on in our community, that would be really helpful, I think. And I, and I really think that people who have questions and all should, should gear them to, whether it's to the Innovation Center or to the, our own Planning and Development Department, I'm sure they could help with this. But, you know, it, it just seems like a no-brainer. It's gonna provide public green space, the developer's gonna donate the extra land, they're gonna be the sole responsibility of maintenance costs and sole responsibility for the developer not to take any funds from the town. There will be no funds taken from the police, fire, school, roads, et cetera. It all comes from state and federal grants. The improvements will be $7 to $10 million worth of improvements overall and it will improve the sidewalks, the traffic lights, the street lighting in and around the land and convert some land to public use. It seems like a no-brainer and I really hope that people support this project. If anyone's got a concern about supporting it, then they should get their information before, if indeed, this does come to a vote of support by this council. I was in a general government meeting on March 12th where we talked about demolishing old historic building, buildings and a lot of people had something to say about that. Council Shenier, you said that, and I paraphrase slightly, but your words were very clear if you, if you listen back. I find it difficult for a community, the town, government officials, talking, telling people what to do with their property. You know, that was, that was a quote. And, and the chairman even also talked about, you know, investors pouring millions of dollars into something and then the government telling the private sector what to do with the money. So, I, this is a big So I, this is a big project that's going on in this campus. This campus has existed historically forever. It's been developed occasionally with a few things that have come in and out, but like K Street, it hadn't been occupied since the eighties before they put the housing. And while I'm not a fan of adding housing generally, just because of all the things, you know, that you have to deal with, it's, that's been done. It's an overlay district, they're going to have housing there. This is about, this grant isn't about that, this grant is about the bridges, sidewalks, the safety of the people who live there, the voters, and I encourage everybody to really dig deep, learn more about it, talk to Mr. Norton, talk to somebody, but support this grant. I think for our community, it's what we need. So why not Southbridge? Bring the money home, free money, let's take it, let's run with it and make it better. Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Moving on to, are there any other citizens who would like to speak at this time? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Appointment of Tracy Price of Sturbridge, Mass. as a Special Traffic Constable based on the Police Chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2028. State Ethics in Good Standing.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Shenier, seconded by Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. That was at the Subcommittee unanimous vote.
Unanimous vote at the Subcommittee. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Ten, Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Appointment of Jason W. Cantara of Charlton, Mass. as a Special Traffic Constable based on the Police Chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2028. State Ethics in Good Standing.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. That was at the Subcommittee as well as unanimous vote.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Eleven, Vote to Approve the Approval of the First Amendment to the Host-Community Agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Morabezzo LLC, and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Documents.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Reading over the host agreement, I noticed that the time limit is not the same as the other marijuana facilities, and I didn't know if the council wanted to change that like the others, or if they're satisfied with that, that's fine.
So I'm satisfied with it, we are working with our legal counsel now to put four brand-new host agreements, that'll be forthcoming. This was an amendment to one that already gone to the CCC, was just some minor changes that had to be done on other items that didn't find compliant, so we will be bringing four new agreements that, we have a call on Friday, on Wednesday, we have the draft agreements for those, because we have to make sure that all our agreements become compliant, so there'll be four new ones going through the process of Plan and Development Subcommittee or General Gov, whichever one decides to take that up.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Twelve, Vote to Enter an Agreement with Public Safety Consultants LLC in the Amount of $8,140 to Conduct an Assessment Center to Fill the Rank of Sergeant and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Dow. Seconded by Shenier. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. That was at the Subcommittee as well, unanimous vote.
Unanimous at Subcommittee Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I want to apologize, I didn't make the meeting, PPP meeting on Monday night, but over the course of the year and a half that I've been on council, and prior to even my time being on, we have spent a great deal of money on the Assessment Center for promotions for employees coming on and those kind of things. My question is, we have a police chief, we have a deputy chief, we have multiple lieutenants, we have sergeants, we have a town manager, and we have HR. Why can't we do it and save some money? You're going to pick who you want to pick to be your second-in-command or whoever you want, and I just feel that with money situation the way it is today, that we would better, we would be better served by allowing the town manager, HR, the chiefs in his department, we do it in-house.
Chief?
And I know they talk about, well, favoritism and all that, well...
Much like old, yeah.
The final say is us anyways, so I just...
Chief?
If I could quickly just explain, we're a civil service police department, we got voted in the community back in the fifties. In the eighties, the chief's position was put in the civil service, so per statute, we have to give an exam honored by civil service. So what happens is you can either do the statewide test, which is every October, or you could do an assessment center. As the chief, and just coming up through the ranks for the last thirty years or so, the statewide test, I'll give you an example, when I took it as for sergeant position, I was tested out with people who were police officers in the city of Boston, and I mentioned this at the Subcommittee, were taking the same exact standardized test I was taking, our job descriptions are vastly different. An assessment center basically hones in on your community, it's geared towards your community, and even I'll use an example, sergeant in Sturbridge has much different responsibility than policing in the environment we police in. So we gear these tests, we use a company that's authorized by civil service to administer the test, but we have to give an exam, I keep saying honored by civil service for lack of a better word, that civil service will allow us to do, and there's two of them, a statewide written or an assessment center. The statewide written is cheaper, because it's on the candidate to pay the cost, it's a hundred fifty dollars for each individual candidate, but you would said that I can pick, I cannot pick, they have to score within the top three, and that's part of the statute of the civil service. So if they take the statewide test, irregardless of our professional relationship and how good a candidate may be, they have to test a certain score or they cannot even be considered. Same thing with an assessment center, they have to finish in the top three, have to be tested by a company authorized by civil service to give such test in the state, and then the town manager and I have to select from that list of three candidates. So I can't just pick whoever I want to pick, it's a process we've done, again, this community since the fifties. So I believe it works, it eliminates any issues. If you come forward and these three candidates, they all took the same test, you go off that score in an interview from the top three, and then even if I select, say, the person that scored third, I have to justify the civil service why I went with that candidate. So if we have two candidates that have two years in the job, and they probably not ready for the sergeant role yet, but they tested out better than the candidate with twenty years that has a lot of experience, that can be a reason for me bypassing them. But everything has to, you have to have all the i's dotted, the t's crossed, before you make any promotion through civil service. It essentially eliminates any conflicts and any issues, because it's a neutral party rendering this exam.
All right, thank you, I just, I didn't know why.
Yep. Any other discussion? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't agree with spending this kind of money either. I think with the police chief's experience, the town manager has vast law enforcement experience, and we have an HR department that gets paid a lot of money to do these type of things. I think we can also, I also agree that we can do this in-house, so I'll be voting no on this tonight, thank you.
Any other discussion by any other candidates?
Mr., excuse me, for one second, if I could through you, Mr. Chair, legally, we cannot do this in-house. As long as we're a civil service police department, this absolutely cannot be done in-house. It would make my life as a chief a lot easier, because we could, the manager and I could sit and take the best candidate for the job, and it certainly would be a lot cheaper, but we are a civil service police department, we cannot do it in-house. It's, we would be in violation of the statute.
Any further discussion?
And just for the councils too, this list would be established for two years.
Correct, valid for two years.
So if we have another vacancy next year, or two years with a possible retirement or whatever, that list would be good for that two years, so we would not have to retest. So any sergeant that leaves or for whatever reason gets a promotion or whatever this, we would just go off of this list with the number of candidates ranked, so.
Just a quick question, the list is alive for two years. Say somebody leaves a year from now, do you have to get another assessment committee to reassess?
But once you have an eligible list, it's good for two years, so even if we promote somebody next week, that's good for two years, any candidate on that list is still eligible.
So we don't need an assessment?
You would not need to do another assessment as long as it's within two years.
The list is established.
Any further discussion? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, so it sounds to me like the assessment, they do the assessment, but they don't pick the person, you still pick the person, so what's the difference? That's still in-house, whether they pick them and then they bring it to you and you pick them, to me, that's, you're just, it's just semantics, you're just playing with words. Still being done in-house, I don't think we need to spend this money, that's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Shenier.
So for us to do things like that in-house, civil service needs to go away?
Yes.
Okay.
You would have to remove civil service from the police department through the union, and they'd have to vote to remove it.
No, no, I understand that.
Which...
But civil service is an added protection for the town and for the employees.
For a reason.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Marquetti.
So I don't think that's true either, because the fire department is not civil service, and we do this, we do this with the fire department. When I asked, why do we do this with the fire department, I was told because they're not civil service, so which is it?
So I'll answer. We do, we do the Assessment Center because that was the policy that was established by the town council. So town council, when they established the promotional process for officers on the fire department, we voted as a council back in the day to have an Assessment Center. If the town council decides that they don't want to do an Assessment Center for the fire department, that would certainly be the will of the council, but we established the promotional process to make sure that everybody, because when I first became a counselor back in the day, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Adams, we had a very contentious process for the lieutenant's position at that time. So we came up with a process by which doing it, but this is civil service, we don't have an option, so that's the case there, so.
Counselor Evers?
I think part of the reason we have such an incredibly professional and diverse and talented group of police officers is because we follow this format and this way of hiring, and I think it is part of the law, it is required, and we have the money in the budget. I don't see why we wouldn't follow the law, and again, if we want the quality of officers that we have in our community and the expertise and the qualified people that we have, this is the right way to do that.
Any other discussion? Counselor Shenier?
Maybe it's something that we should look at, maybe a future Agenda Item for General Gov, maybe to look at how we could do things in-house or what would be best for the department. I will always go along with the recommendation of the chief, we hire him, he's the professional, so...
I think the council has an option with the fire department because they're not civil service, we don't have the option because we are civil service on police side.
I understand that.
So that's pretty black and white on tonight's decision. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So chief, as I heard you say this, the option that we would have an option here, we could require folks to take the state assessment, right, rather than, rather than this, this, I guess it's a private company that does it. And the reason we've gone in this direction in the past from what you've said is that we get, it is more tailored to our community, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, and if I could elaborate on that, most cities and towns now do assessments. They're moving away from the statewide exam, just because it's not, it's a, it's a cross-the-board exam. You know, sergeants, people who are testing out in Boston, Worcester, Revere, they're taking the same test I'm taking for Southbridge, and it doesn't match the needs of the community because every community is different. So most departments that I've dealt with, chiefs that I have a relationship with, we all use assessments, because it's more geared to the community. The Assessment Center, it's three different vendors that submitted a quote, they'll ask me, what are some of the issues in your community? What does a sergeant have to know how to do in your community? We'll have conversation with the lieutenants, deputy, myself, so they'll gear it towards what our supervisors are going to need to know. It's just a much better predictor of how well they're going to be, how well of a job they're going to do as a supervisor in this community. That's why I choose the Assessment Center.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, and since you're civil service, you would have to have, and if we wanted to, let's say, get rid of the civil service designation for the police department, we would have to get, the union would have to approve that, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It'd have to be bargained out of the contract, and that's, we're a long way from that.
It also would take a valid vote, because they tried to get rid of civil service in the eighties, failed miserably by three to one to keep civil service, so going forward, let's keep that in the back of my mind, it's been tested. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, one opposed.
Thank you.
Moving on to Thirteen. Vote of Police Department Transfer Request of $8,140 from Account 001210-511000, Salary to Account 001210-530000, Specialized Services for the Purpose of Conducting the Assessment Center for the Position of Sergeant.
Second.
The motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow.
Chair, through you, that was unanimous vote at the Subcommittee.
Unanimous at Subcommittee approval. Any discussion? None, all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed. Moving on to Fourteen, Vote to Authorize the Application and Acceptance if Awarded the FY25 Massachusetts Firefighter Safety Equipment Grant Phase Two, and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Counselor?
Through you, Chair, that says approve, unanimous at Subcommittee.
Unanimous at Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Fifteen, Vote to Apply for the FY26 Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant in an Amount Not to Exceed $200,000 with a Match of 10%, that will be in-kind services to Assess Public and Private Dams and Levees in the Town of Southbridge, and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Dow, seconded by Shenier. Discussion? I didn't go to DPW, did I?
I'm sorry.
BP, PND?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you.
Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was unanimously voted positively.
Unanimous at Subcommittee, any discussion? No discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was just wondering what type of in-kind service would that amount to?
We could use staff services to provide any evaluations, paperwork, office time, office management, so that would be our match.
And that would total $20,000?
About $20,000, yeah, we could articulate that.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Sixteen, Vote to Enter into an Agreement with Timeless Beauty Bar at 16 Hamilton Street for $1,250 using CDBG FY2223 Commercial Rehab Funds to Provide a Sign at 16 Hamilton Street and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was voted unanimously to move forward.
Any further discussion? None, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Seventeen, Vote to Approve entering into an Agreement with Nancy Sylage for $15,000 in Response to the Town's Call for Art Funded by New England Foundation for the Arts, and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Through a two-two vote, there was no recommendation by the committee on this item.
No recommendation to that Subcommittee, any further discussion? If not, Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd be voting no on this tonight, I still don't care for the look of this sculpture. I know when the Call of Art went out, it said that they wanted to celebrate the community and the history of Southbridge. To me, this sculpture does not reflect the people or the history of Southbridge. It's also, we're paying $15,000 for a piece of used artwork. This was, sculpture was originally in front of Concord Massachusetts Art Center, it was meant to draw attention to greenhouse gas emissions by cows. I don't see many cows grazing in Southbridge. to greenhouse gas emissions by cows, I don't see many cows grazing in Southbridge, the artist has already, we've already, they've already paid the artist for the design, the labor and the material and the installation, so I'm just wondering if we're being charged twice for something that was already built, designed and built, I also question, Ms. Dean said that if we vote no at this time, we would not have time to put out another call for art, because this has to be put in by June, and then the money would have to be returned to the New England Foundation for the Arts, but according to the New England Foundation for the Arts website, we have twenty-four months to use the grant funds, so we have two years to pick something designed by a Southbridge artist, the contract with Ms. Selfage expires in June, but not the grant, so I'll be voting no on this artwork, the consensus that I got from residents on Facebook, which I don't see a lot of them here tonight, but the consensus that I got was that the sculpture was not reflective of Southbridge, and I know a lot of people say, don't go on Facebook, but let's be honest here, we really don't have a local newspaper anymore in this town, so the only way you're going to get the word out is to go on Facebook, so in my own opinion, if you want to put that sculpture at the art center, I wouldn't have a problem with that, to me, that's where it belongs, usually I go to a museum or an art center, they'll always have some weird, bizarre artwork in the building, so that's how I'm voting tonight, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, by its very nature, art is designed to evoke controversy, by its very nature, it's designed to evoke conversation, I'd like to think that the town of Southbridge is ready for an elevation in its conversation, that we don't need blatantly obvious artwork every time we produce an artwork, to evoke that conversation, I think that culturally speaking, the town can afford, and I don't mean by money, I mean in giving, can afford to have controversy about its artwork, can afford to have conversation about its artwork, I will vote tonight to support this article, I think that the idea that was brought up at the PND subcommittee meeting by Counselor Marquetti, in terms of the railroad-designed historical, historical project, is a great idea, I think it's well-suited for the depot, because it's my understanding that the registry may be leaving at some point, and if that's the case, then we have a building that was designed for railroad, with a railroad car next to it, and that would be a perfect place for that type of project, in the meantime, I think we can broaden our horizons a little bit, we can expand what we are about, I think that another citizen that was at the meeting talked about having a pearl necklace through the town, and having various pearls located at spots throughout the rail trail, to evoke discussion, to evoke conversation, and I, that's what I foresee for this particular item right here, and its location, I think it's a feather in Southbridge's cap that we're even willing to consider doing this to begin with, so as, and as I said before, I will be supporting this tonight.
Counsel Virginia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, last week, I was, last council meeting, I made the motion to refer it back to the subcommittee, and I reacted to the comments on Facebook, social media, some of the texts I received at home, and the promises of the people that were going to, or opposed this, were going to be at the meeting, nobody showed up in opposition of the art at this meeting, when the lady, the artist stood up and spoke about the particular piece of art and what it meant, and how she envisioned it, I saw her vision, the footprints made the difference that made me understand, looking at that piece of art, and it is art, and art is, in the eyes of the beholder, so I am going to change my mind tonight and support this piece of art and where it's going to be located, thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Revis.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I was also at the meeting, and in listening to the folks who did the work with the, the planning department, and when I heard from the director of the library, Ms. Morrissey, about the process and how they really scoured and put together all this information about the artist, and the artist is well-known throughout our state, and also in other areas of the country, and I think she made a great point in talking about attracting people to our rail trail, when we have the rail trail, attracting people that, that are following this artist, and making Southbridge that destination, and complementing the restaurant row that we so often talk about in our meetings, and so thinking about, you know, we want restaurants and businesses, but we also have to attract people from all over our state to come to our community, I think this artwork will do that, I also appreciated that the artist talked about adding the footprints in order to, to make the artwork, in, you know, put the artwork in context, she also talked to us about the artwork in other, where it was installed, had provided shade, and I think where it's going to be located will provide shade for young, you know, young people who are going to be in that area, you know, participating and, you know, getting, getting ice cream or, or something from, you know, Scoops of Hope, and so, and also complementing what, what Counselor Daniels talked about, where the depot is, and having something more specific to the history of Southbridge in that area, again, I think we can have both, right, something that causes, you know, conversation and attracts people, and then another, in another area, have artwork that depicts our history, our rich history in Southbridge, so I will be voting in favor of this tonight.
Any further discussion? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you, may I ask Ms. Dean to explain, if you don't mind, please, what that art mean, if you can give a little explanation? Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel, the Let's Get Going sneaker or footprint that was presented to us, yes, was originally a project for Concord about footsteps and walking, reducing carbon emissions, and this person's repurposing this art here, it's otherwise going to sit idle in her backyard, it's definitely worth well over fifteen thousand dollars, we are up on our two-year contract this summer, and so we do not have time to go out for another call for art, and my suggestion at the last meeting was, let the town experience the artwork for the eighteen months we're required to have it installed, and if at that time, we decide we want to relocate it to a more discreet location along the rail trail that maybe isn't the downtown, you could make that choice in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so we're, we're at the two-year contract on the grant from the New England Foundation for the Arts, is that what you're saying?
If I may, through you, Chair, yes, I can provide you the contract that we have with them, they've been very kind to us, to, our call for arts extended a little longer than they, they'd hoped it had, they would have liked us to have been in contract with an artist by last fall, but it was taking us a little longer, and so we're already pushing the envelope.
But you didn't put out a call for art until November twenty twenty-four.
If I may, through you, Chair, in order to go out for the call for art, we had to have met milestones with the New England Foundation for the Arts, so they had to approve us going out, and it was after we had developed a contract, they had approved, we had gone through the coursework that we were required to, et cetera.
And also, if you don't meet the twenty-four hour timeline, according to their website, all you have to do is write them a letter and say, we are delayed, and they, they're pretty liberal with that, correct?
If I may, through you, it's not the indication to me at all, and I'm happy to share correspondence, I'm happy to put the council in touch with the New England Foundation for the Arts, if you wanted to make the case to try to go out for another call for art, however, it's my impression that we were already under the wire, and we're lucky to be able to execute this project to the caliber that we are by June, if you compare the, you know, the only two submissions we had, we've been very lucky with this submission.
Any further discussion? If not, I'd just like to make a quick comment, the subcommittee was absolutely fabulous, the disagreement between historical and artwork was a healthy debate, I want the citizens to say, I want to thank Counsel Marquetti, Counsel Shinya, that spurred the discussion, it's a good discussion, it might be a disagreement on when to do it, where to put it, but it's a good discussion, we are becoming a destiny of different things, art, history, all types of things, and I want citizens, as the chairman of the council, I invite each and every citizen, think about an idea, when that trail goes through the old dog food warehouse, which is called Twelfth Grain, maybe you want to put something historical there that reflects when the train used to come in and bring in the dog food, and that's what that main building was, was the cannery, that's why it's painted silver, or when it goes by a ball field, put one of your local heroes up there, I invite the public to get creative in everything that we do on the rail, don't be afraid of art, I'm not an art guy, I'm voting in favor tonight, because I want to become a destiny with people that do like art, if they stop at Central's, or they stop at one of the restaurants, that they walk out, sit down, look at the artwork, see the train, we have a lot of work ahead, a lot of work to go, as far as doing the rail trail, don't just end it with one little art piece, let's go full forward and put things over there, as we go by the rail, let's think about our history of Southbridge, let's think about art, we can do it all together, I think that subcommittee painted that picture, I urge the council going forward to give it a unanimous vote, to become a destination, to look at different things, I drive by the library, and I stare at that rusty piece of metal every time I drive by, it's a piece of artwork, and as Counsel Shinya said, it's in the eye of the beholder, it might look different to me than somebody else, I looked at that artwork, I thought it looked like an ear, other people thought something else, let's all enjoy the art, let's enjoy our town, let's bring some good ideas to the rail trail, any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Counsel Shinya.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Kelly.
Yes.
Counsel Lozo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
No.
Counsel Montigny.
Yes.
Counsel Ortiz. Oh, Counsel Revis, I apologize, thank you.
Yes.
Counsel Revis, thank you.
Motion passed, one, one rescinding vote, moving on to eighteen, vote to enter into an agreement with Jennifer Wall for arts and crafts instruction, for two sessions in the amount of four hundred dollars, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
There's a motion, second, discussion.
This was voted unanimously at subcommittee.
Unanimous at subcommittee, any further discussion? Counsel Revis.
I apologize, I didn't get to watch this meeting, I just had a question, because I didn't see the contract in the packet, what, what days of the week?
There should be the agreement, there should be two of them.
Oh, in the agreement.
Yeah, it's an agreement, these are sessions that they've run, they, Mike puts up the, when they, they run them, it's not, it's just two more sessions, it's because the town accountant wants, because it's more than two sessions, to have it under agreement, so whatever they schedule it, it's just for them to schedule the two, so they'll put it out.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Not all of the favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number nineteen, vote to enter into an agreement with Jennifer Songler for yoga instruction for three sessions in the amount of one hundred and eighty dollars, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion, a second.
This is recommended unanimously at subcommittee.
Unanimous at subcommittee, any further discussion? Just town manager.
Just go back, if you read the agreement, it is in the packet, but on the previous one, arts and crafts, that's scheduled for April thirtieth and May twenty-first, and these three are scheduled April twelfth, May third, and May seventeenth, in the agreements.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty, vote to approve the community development block grant funded housing rehabilitation deferred payment loan contract between the town and the property owners, in the amount of forty-six, forty-six million nine hundred and eighty-five?
Forty-six thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a few too many numbers here, forty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, twenty-nine thousand five, excuse me, twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, for the, the letting and repairs, and, I got a blank here, seventeen seven?
Seventeen thousand seven thirty-five.
Yeah, mine, mine is all whited out, for the roofing, and approve the town, excuse me, enter, I'm stalling, I can't see my agenda, to approve that the town enter into the agreement, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second. I don't know if they're running out of ink on this one. Counsel Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, the committee voted three zero one to move this forward.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-one, vote to approve the amendment of number three, VHB Downtown Design Contract, and zero dollars, and allow the town manager to sign all related dark paperwork. Your motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second, discussion.
This did go to subcommittee, just, the questions were for, the questions that came was the zero amount was for, the amendment reallocates previously approved funds to cover out of scope costs required to complete the design, including the surveys of the seventy-six Central Street, fifty-four Foster Street, seventy-five Foster Street, survey of gas mains, fault construction on Central Street, prior to mass DOT support, also cover redesign of various plans to accommodate changes in existing conditions that were noted above, and also preparation of renderance for a potential Mass Works project on Central Street and Hamilton Street, also collection of traffic counts in preparation for a memorandum to support application for the Mass Works grant along Hamilton Street, Central Street, and Foster Street, so this was just reallocation of previous funds that were budgeted to accommodate those tasks.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, this was unanimously approved by the subcommittee on Wednesday night.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Number twenty-two, vote to approve the amendment, number four, to VHB's Downtown Design Contract, for fifty-one thousand dollars, for additional construction administration and oversight services, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
There's a motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Subcommittee?
This was unanimously approved by the DPW subcommittee on Wednesday night.
Unanimous at subcommittee, any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-three, vote, a human resource department transfer request for two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents, from account zero zero one one five two dash five four two zero zero zero, office supplies to account zero zero one one five two dash five three four two zero zero, print form.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion, a second, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, this matter was discussed at the general, general government subcommittee on Wednesday night, and unanimously approved.
Unanimous at subcommittee, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-four, vote a human resources department transfer request in the amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents, from the following to conference and meetings.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion, a second, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this was unanimously approved at the general government subcommittee meeting.
Any further discussion? Not all of the favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-five, vote, the town manager transfer request of a thousand dollars from the account zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero, Town Council Reserve, to the account zero zero one 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 five three zero 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 zero, Town Council Specials, Specialized Services, for the purpose of the bylaw code updates.
So moved.
There's a motion, a second, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, this matter was discussed and unanimously approved at the general government subcommittee meeting.
Unanimous at subcommittee, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-six. Moving on to 26, vote the town manager's transfer request from fund account 0842, capital stabilization into, in the amount of $38,000 to the account 64210, police capital in the amount of $20,000, and account 64220, fire capital in the amount of $18,000 for the purpose of mobile computers, associated hardware, software, five MDT police, and three ambulance. There's a motion, a second.
Chair, through you, that was at the subcommittee PPP, unanimous vote.
Unanimous vote at protection of personal property. Discussion. Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So these mobile computers, is it a handheld computer, or is it something that sits in their cars? Exactly what are they?
In the police cruises, they would be mounted in the police cruises. I believe the ambulance ones are mobile because they go with the patient into the hospital so that they could sign the paperwork in the hospital. So EMT would normally have it, when they go into a house, they document all their things as a patient. We used to have to write everything down, now everything's through the computer and they click the buttons, it saves the form, and they have to sign it. But the police computers are all mounted permanently in the cruises and act as their office to run computer checks, tickets, citations, warrant checks, shows your license. When they run a car, the license will come up, they can see who the person is in the car and things like that.
It seems to me, my memory isn't that great, but it seems to me back when, during COVID, I thought we had entered into a contract with a company to provide all these computers, and they would take, townwide, take care of all the departments and provide computers. I don't remember exactly when that vote took place, but I just remember we bought a lot of computers during that period of time.
Well, we may have, but that was, COVID was 2020, it is now 2025, five years, computers change, computers break.
But I thought it was part of the contract that they would.
I'll defer to that, but I don't think we had a replacement cost for computers.
Chief.
So just a reminder, the COVID, it was not a contract, it was the CARES Act, which was similar to the Opera Funds, but CARES was the one that I think you're talking about, and I believe we got three computers from that. That was five years ago, so our computers are pretty worn and torn.
And they don't update them? Once they grow old, they don't replace them?
No, as you know, you buy a computer one day, and the next day you could buy a better computer with better software and better operating speeds and RAM and everything like that.
I just thought, I thought we had entered into a contract with a company that would service everything and take care of everything, and if the computer got old, they would replace the computer, but I couldn't, I couldn't find it either, so.
Are you talking about GDS through the IT department?
Maybe, maybe that's what it was.
They do, they handle a lot of our data, software, data and processing of computers and putting them online and taking them off, but they, we still have to buy them.
All right.
This is the hardware part.
All right.
Any further discussion? Not all of the favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 27, vote to authorize to purchase two John Deere lawnmowers, Q820M Commercial Quick Track M Series Lawn Tractors, for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $23,042.48 to be funded from the capital stabilization fund account 0842 and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
Second. Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, a second.
I'd like to offer an amendment to this.
Okay.
I'd like to offer an amendment that we purchase a third mower, and that we fund the substantial third mower funding come from the same account that we're doing this with.
Is amendment on the floor to add a third mower? Second. Seconded by Joseph Dow. Discussion.
Are you going to change the amount? I don't know how that is going to work.
It would be then 33,000, no, 34,563.72.
So the amendment is to make it three, the amount would be 34,563.72. Motion's on the floor and seconded by Joseph Dow. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, the reason I asked about this, adding the third mower is the fact that, my understanding is, is they, the company that makes these motors, lawnmowers, had 53 of them, and the state just bought 50 of them, and we're on, we're telling that we'd like the second one, the two of them. And my concern is that next year there will be none available because of the way that it takes to get equipment. It's like this for everything, fire trucks, ambulances, police cars, it's taking time. So at least we'd have that third one as a backup, and in the event that the mowing season, we get more and more mowing, they'll have a third operation, so that was my reason.
Any discussion on the amendment? Counsel Revis.
I just had a question through you. What will be the remaining amount in this, in this stabilization fund? When we add the third mower?
Let's see.
What's going to be left?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jack, without the internet.
In that account, let's see, there's, it would be well over 120,000 left in that, plus a million that's been reserved for the fire station. So, and then we have, when I was at subcommittee meeting, I had provided a outline of a capital accounts that we're looking to close out, it's being verified by the accountant, that I would bring to a future meeting that accounts for approximately 400 to 450,000. So that would be used to go back into capital stabilization, to be used for any other capital. When I did ask, just for the public, when I did ask the DPW, because we do not have a DPW director at this time, the previous director had not submitted his capital plan, so I asked the operations manager right now as to what was, as to outline the equipment that they have and what their critical need would be. Quite honestly, he said in regards to the number of trucks that we have purchased recently, we have two trucks on order, that the only thing that he would really, absolutely would like is some lawnmowers so that they can do the cemeteries in the fields. These lawnmowers would, the other ones are stand-on and move, these would be bigger and ride, which would also reduce the amount of time that they spend in those cemeteries so that they could do a quicker job and then rotate out to other functions. But we do maintain the whole Oak Ridge Cemetery, which is quite large, so we did buy them a track, the golf, not the golf cart, but you know what I mean, the gator. So this is just to make sure, and we do get perpetual funds from that, so we do have to maintain it. So it's a, for them to just ask, that's all they're asking for, to me, for this fiscal year, we're trying to be as lean as possible. I'm grateful that they came back with just asking for that, so we just want to support that.
What would happen to the old mowers?
They would be disposed of once they get the new ones.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. As a taxpayer, citizen of Southbridge, I think we should just buy what we need and not buy surplus equipment that we don't need. I know some people think we're rich, they have rich pockets, I don't, so I'd like to try and keep our tax increases down a little bit. Tom, I remember one time a former council chair told me the time to talk about taxes is during the budget season, so I think we should just spend what we need and not what we don't need at this time. Thank you.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I agree with Counsel Marquetti, I don't see a need to up the request from two to three. The DPW is not requesting that, as far as I can tell. Went through committee, and two was, two were approved at the committee level, so I would vote against the amendment.
I think, just to input, the reason why this third mower was even being discussed is there won't be any availability in the future for quite a while, and the thing is, between schools and the fields and everything that we do, if we, one mower goes down, you're not going to be able to just go buy a lawnmower because you need it. That's, that's the purpose of the third one. It's like when you order the ambulance, you can get it in three years. And if this happens, you want to get caught with the lawnmower down, so I think this is more of a preventative thing with the problem, that it will be used, but I think the older mowers, as they kick, you're not going to have a lineup because DOT bought 50 mowers. And if we take two, there's going to be one, and that's it. And it's going to be a while before you're going to be able to get them on state bid list. Any further discussion? Counsel Shiny.
Mr. Chair, this one didn't go through subcommittee, this, the town manager brought and asked if it could come forward tonight because of the fact that the mowing company is only going to hold them for so long.
Then you can't get any.
So that's why I told him I didn't have a problem with it coming directly to council tonight.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor, it may be very possible they may not have the third because we only asked them to put two on hold, and then they tried to follow up possibly with the third, so we'll see where we're at on that, but.
Any further discussion? Counsel Revis.
Just a quick question, are we getting, because they're, like, we're getting them at a discounted price?
It's a state business.
I just wanted to understand.
It's a state business.
It's an $11,000 machine, and it's got the wide deck, it's kind of a different purchase. It can cover more ground than the ones we drive now. Save on labor.
If I could, to Counsel Marquetti's point, I certainly do not want to spend money. I asked what the critical need was, what do they need? They're not just wanting this just to have, they need it, and we do a lot of fields, and they need the equipment to maintain the cemeteries in the fields, and they, you know, or they, and they use hand mowers. The goal would be to get rid of some of the hand mowers that they have as well and use equipment that will speed up the process, so.
What you'll make up on labor, we'll take care of what we're talking about. Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much. I'm going to support this amendment tonight. I think over the last couple of years, you used to hear former department head director, Rich Benoit, talk about how there was always a need, a greater need for tackling the grass problem in town. He almost talked about outsourcing it at one point because he didn't really know which direction to go, but now that we can get these things at a discount, and they're obviously very good products, they're highly sought out by the state, and since then, we have combined our DPW with the maintenance in terms of where they house themselves. So it's really a no-brainer. I too know the seriousness of this budget season, and I wish we didn't have to spend money in certain places, but the way this has already been a problem, and there's finally a very cheap solution last minute that we can actually pull from, I really think it's important for all the departments, especially in the schools as well too, that we approve this third mower, please. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I agree with Counsel Marquetti, we don't want to spend citizens and taxpayers' money. But as a businessman, in my experience, when you see something on sale, you always think for the future. You buy two more now, one year later you need the other one, you pay for one like you pay for two. So I understand and I agree with you, but I think because we're getting the state discount, we should buy the third one. I'm sure next year or the year after, we need another one. Why we have to pay three times more what we can buy it now and have it on side? It's not like something's going to get expired, or it's going to be missing, or something we're going to lose of the value. The only thing we're doing, we're putting a $10,000 now, we saving 20 down in the future. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Two opposed.
That's an amendment.
That's for the amendment. Now the main motion has amended, any further discussion on the main motion has amended? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did ask for some, some pictures or invoices to show me that those old lawnmowers need to be replaced. I didn't receive anything, just wondering why not.
Take a ride down DPW and have, they're basically junk. I already told them.
So Counsel Marquetti, you did ask, I apologize, today was a little hectic with trying to figure out how to get the town treasurer accountant, collector's office and everything, and managing that, so I apologize for not getting that, but whatever information I could get to you. I don't play games. If they say they're broken, they're broken, but I'll get that information for you.
I know that the council chair always says, trust but verify, so that's all I'm doing. I'm just asking to verify that these things are really broken.
And I trust but verify as well, because I.
And I trust and I verified, I went to the DPW, I looked at the equipment, and I verified that, that's the only reason why I'm supporting it, is that it's time, because the first thing that's going to happen is, one of them's going to go down like the sweeper, and then it's not going to happen, and when someone's going to get their grave cut, we're going to get the phone calls, and now, now we have two sweepers, it seems like we've cured our problem, and we have to wait a long time for that new sweeper. So it's almost like history is teaching us, let's get the third mower. Why? Well, if I have history, talk to me, don't get caught with your pants down.
I don't think you should be afraid of the state bid list either, there's a lot of times you can find things off the bid list for a lot less money, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? One negative vote, nay vote. Moving on to Agenda item number 28, vote to declare a surplus, a refrigerator oven at the community center that doesn't work, nor have any value, or dispose of the items. Do we have a motion? There's a motion, a second. There's a motion, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved at subcommittee, and I didn't have to see a picture from the manager, I trusted his judgment. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Review and amendment of the Southbridge Code of Bylaws, Chapter 11, Department Revolving Funds, Section 11-500, authorize revolving funds by eliminating and striking out 11-500.3, total maintenance revolving fund section in all subsections due to the creation of the Solid Waste and Disposal Enterprise Fund. Motion, a second.
The motion's the third reading.
Oh, third reading. I thought we do have to have.
The motion's next.
Down further?
Yeah.
Yeah, vote, I'm sorry, they separated down below. Vote the following amendment to the town bylaws. There's a motion by Counsel Shiny, seconded by Dow. Any additions, any amendments to what's in front of us? Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the first reading was 224, 25.
You're right. I did ask that to be changed, I apologize.
You're right.
Any further discussion? Rule call.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counseler Dow.
Yes.
Counseler Kelly.
Yes.
Counseler Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
Counselor Revis.
Yes.
And Counsel Shenyi.
Yes.
Unanimous of all present, moving on. The town council of the town of Southbridge, exercise power, exercise power to confer on the Section 8.
I think you just read it, you just voted that.
I didn't read that. My vote. Number 31, review and amendment for the Southbridge Code of Bylaws, Chapter 11, Department Revolving Funds, Section 11-500, authorize the revolving funds by adding the following section. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 11-500.9 Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund, 11-500.9.1, fund name. There shall be a separate fund called the Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund, authorized for use by the municipal treasurer. 11-500.9.2, revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund as a separate account. The treasurer may accept cash or noncash guarantees that may be made to secure performance of that particular obligation. A guarantee would include a letter of credit, performance bond, or insurance policy. 11-500.9.3, purposes and expenditures, to secure restoration of a public roadway under a street opening permit or completion of work required under a drainage or driveway permit within a specified time. The intent is to return the amount of the deposit if the work is satisfactorily performed, but if there is a default, for the municipality to be able to use it to complete the work if it so chooses. 11-500.9.4, other requirements slash reports, none. 11-500.9.5, fiscal years, the Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1st, 2024, and is the third reading. I can make a motion to, that we vote, adopt it?
Number 32.
Vote the following amendment to the Southbridge bylaws, the town council of the town of Southbridge, in executive exercise of powers conferred on it by Section 8 of Article LXXIX of Amendments to the State Constitution and by its own rule, Home Rule Charter, does hereby by its own rule, home rule charter, does hereby adopt and enact the following. Amend the town of Southbridge bylaws, Chapter eleven, Department Revolving Funds, Section one-one-five-zero-zero, authorize revolving funds by adding the following section. Show move.
Second.
Is a motion a second? Discussion? Any amendments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just reading over this, I would like to make a suggestion and I'll put it in the form of an amendment if I'd have a little help with how to word it. I don't think it should be up to the treasurer really to release funds, any money without a final inspection, whether it be the DPW director or the project manager. I think they should, they're the ones who should sign off on the project first before any performance bonds or insurance policies are released by following the road construction bylaw to determine whether the project is complete. I mean, we've had a lot of problems in the last several years up on Durfee, up on that place called Fox Run where they walked away from the job, and also we've had problems on Main Street that I felt wasn't completed correctly. So I just think something should be added here to make sure that it's not the treasurer making the final decision here, because I don't think the treasurer would be qualified to make that decision. I'd like to see somebody go in and inspect it and sign off on it first, so. In fact, a little, have a little help on how, on how we would word that. Maybe have the DPW director, under the part that says, other requirements, maybe that the DPW director or project manager, managers sign off on the work before performance bonds or insurance policies are released. Would that be a good way to make this amendment? It's just something I think we should consider adding. Thank you.
I recommend postpone the actual adoption until the next meeting so I can talk to legal counsel about how possibly to make sure that, because it's not just the DPW. You have the plan in board, so it's an approved subdivision plan. They may have to hold a bond for the subdivision. So it's not just Department of Public Works, so I, your point is well taken, so I think perhaps I'd need to get a little clarification on that to make sure that we put it in the right section, whether it's the, the purpose and expenditures or other requirements, so I would, I would want to follow-
We wouldn't have to have another reading, we would just have a final vote.
Right, correct, yeah.
All right, I'll make that motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Second.
April fourteenth. Is a direct postponement of this item? There's a motion on the floor to postpone to April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five?
Second.
Second by Council Rivas. Discussion?
Thank you. I have no problem postponing it, but just a question maybe through you to the manager, is this going to cause a problem because we just deleted something in the last thing and now we're going to wait for weeks to-
No, no, the other ones are deletion, that, that, no.
All right, thank you.
Council Marquetti's point is well taken, because, yeah, how would you want to make sure that you release it?
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? In the name of all present, moving on to council's forum. Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to comment on the citizen who came up here and talked about the roads and he has a good point there. A lot of the roads of the residents, the neighborhood streets are in bad shape. If you drive up Maria Avenue where I live, it's like a washboard and it's, I, it's getting pretty aggravating to drive on that and the damage that it's doing to my car. And there's a lot of other small roads in town with some major, major problems. So I know that we are doing a lot of work on the main roads, but I do think we need to pay some attention to the secondary roads, the neighborhood, the roads throughout the neighborhood. So I know that we took out a ten million dollar bond a few years ago to address that and I don't know whatever happened to that, but it seems like that's been on the back burner for some reason. Also, I'd like, if I could get a chance to sit down with the town manager and go over the capital project list that you gave me, there's a lot of things on there. I'd like to see us try, try to get a control of and see if we can take some of that, the funding back. For example, the Jacob Edwards Library, they have almost, what, two hundred thousand dollars in funds that were given to them when I first got on the council to do repairs over there that have never been done. So I would just like to go over it line by line and get a better understanding of what that capital project, what we can take back. Like I said, the time to talk about taxes is at, is at the budget time. Past town council chairman said that to me and I'll never forget it. Other than that, thank you and happy St. Patrick's Day to all. Thank you.
I'm glad you're such a fan. Counselor, Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. Last Wednesday, last Thursday, I attended a meeting of the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Committee and it was focused on, on two bills which are being sponsored by state legislators on Beacon Hill, specifically H. twenty-five-seventy-one and S. sixteen-fifty, which would be an act creating a municipal and public safety building authority. And what that authority would be is, it would be very similar to what we see now for public schools. It would mean applying for funding and based on a scale of need, be awarded money for rehabilitation or new construction of public safety buildings such as police and fire buildings or municipal structures such as town halls and DPWs. If those bills are combined and passed, they would probably not apply to our current fire building construction, but would potentially apply to work needed for our town hall here in Southbridge and perhaps the DPW. So the bill is different now than it has been in the past and I know that there's been some talk about this the last few years on Beacon Hill and amongst ourselves here and talking with our representatives and all. And the difference is, is that there's a pay for section this year, which is being used, which is, which means that the bill is not just being asked to be passed with no sense of where the funding is coming from, but instead, these legislators are asking that some of the marijuana taxes that are being paid into the state be used to fund the expected rewards for the public service buildings. Other previous attempts, as I said, had no way proposed to pay for the awards. I think the bill is very important to the town of Southbridge. It'd be nice if we had something like this a couple of years ago when it came time to begin to work on the fire department building, but we're in the middle of a facility study on the town hall. This is a beautiful building. There's going to be a lot of work that I think is going to need to be done to bring this into the twenty-first century. It's got good bones, but the skin is a little fragile right now. It definitely needs some work. So I think it's important for the town to have these bills passed. So I think that this is something that should be on the radar of Representative Marcy and Senator Fatman and therefore, I'm making the following motion this evening and if there's a friendly second to it, then I would ask the council to either vote on it tonight or to refer it to the proper subcommittee for further discussion. But I'm making the motion that I move that the Southbridge Town Council resolve to support the creation of a municipal and public safety building authority as being discussed by our state government and that our state representative and state senator be informed of such resolution of support.
Motion's out of order at this point. My question is if we have to waive the rules to add anything to the agenda, so the motion was out of order. My thing is, why don't we just refer this to PPP and formally have a, an actual agenda item put on the next agenda?
Okay.
Dow, Council Dow will put it on your subcommittee. It's PPP. It's a great idea because when they did schools, they put so many cents on the gas tax to create the money that fixed all the schools in the state. So the concept has been used before, it's just a matter of where they get the money. Counselor Marquetti?
I just wanted to ask a question about, isn't it in our charter or our bylaws that, that we can create a building committee? Wouldn't that be the same thing?
Create a building committee, huh?
I think so, yeah. So wouldn't this be the same thing as a building committee?
No.
No.
What they're doing is, this is where you go to Boston, we went to the, to Boston and get our financing, we got, I don't know, eighty-seven percent for the school.
Okay.
We would go to Boston once a month and it got, and then it was every other week and what we do is we fight for those dollars and I think the reason why we won some of our money was because of the disrepair of our, of our high school and then we proved that we need the middle school, so, you know, you have to deal with that. They have to get their house in order. This is getting their house in order on creating their committee to have the money and where they're going to get the money.
All right.
To give it to the most needy communities that want to get their town buildings done. So Counselor Daniels, I will, we will make sure we'll put this on the PPP and we'll formally have it come forward.
Great.
Anything else, Counselor Daniels?
No, thank you.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair through you. First, I want to say sorry for her loss, Michelle, our finance and department, and I want to say thank you for all the DPW workers through the winters. I know a lot of residents frustrated about the trash and the road. You know, it's winter, snow, road frozen, just be patient on us. We're doing our best with the money we have to make sure everybody happy. Nothing will done overnight, but we do have a plan, we're working on it. We don't have all the money right now, we're working together and I want to say happy Patrick's Day and my son's birthday, happy birthday Jonathan. Thank you.
Counsel Shania?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tuesday night, I attended the school committee's public hearing on their budget and the budget is estimated to be in excess of, I believe, forty-five million dollars. So I came to the public meeting to ask some questions of the school committee and Dr. Vilar, who is really the person that sets the budget and presents it. I was informed by the chairman, Murch, that we would be allowed to talk, but we weren't allowed to ask any questions and if we wanted to ask questions, that we would have submitted or emailed them to Dr. Vilar or to himself or to somebody. So I, I did get up and voice my concerns about being not allowed to ask questions as a citizen and as a counselor and I told him that I would refer it to when it comes back to subcommittee, but I was taken back to the fact that the school committee held a public hearing and would not allow the public to get up and speak about or ask questions of the school committee of Dr. Vilar. After the meeting, Chairman Murch says to me, the reason he did that was that Dr. Vilar doesn't have any of the questions, answers to the questions that I would ask and that's what happened last season. So I was just taken back that we weren't allowed to talk at a public hearing, which I, I read a statement that part of the open meeting law says you're allowed to speak at a public hearing and ask questions. The other part of this saga, I guess if you want to call it, was the fact that I can't find anywhere where there was a legal notice put in the newspaper to announce the public hearing other than the notice that was on the town's website and bulletin board downstairs. And my understanding that it's supposed to be a legal notice of publication in a local newspaper, I believe. So I even questioned the fact is if that meeting was even a legitimate legal public hearing to, for the school committee to have been held. And maybe if, I know we got a lot of things on the town manager's plate, but if he could ask a question of that, if he would be able to find out if there was a legal notice and then we can file, I will file a complaint with the open meeting law violation, but I can't, I can't find a legal notice. So I was, like I say, I was quite disturbed that, usually when you don't want people to ask questions or want people to talk is you have something to hide and that's the impression that I was given that night and, you know, I commend all the hard work that they're doing to try to get out of receivership, but I think they need to be more open and transparent to the general public and to us as councils if they want our support. Thank you.
Counsel Shania, I mean, I commend the school committee tonight for all their training. The problem is, not the school committee, the problem is Mr. Vilar and I think he needs to take some training, especially on the open meeting law and especially on a public, when you have a public forum and you have that hearing on your budget, anybody can ask any questions, anybody can come up and talk to the respective board and if there are any questions and he doesn't have the answers, he writes them down and gets the answers for them. I don't understand how you have a public hearing with no public input. It's a first for me, but I, I'm going to look into it. Thank you. Counsel Rivas?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure about that question. I don't, I wasn't sure if it was just a presentation or if it was, if it was on the agenda as a public hearing or not, I'm not, I'm not sure on that, the answer to that, so.
I think they had to postpone it.
But in regards to, I also attend the school committee meeting on Tuesday and I do want to commend the school committee's work and moving to phase two in the DUCI plan. I think that is a huge milestone and thinking about when we first began, where we talked about that plan back in June of 2024 and in such a short time, the school committee with the leadership of Chairman Murch and the work of all of the new members, who I've been happy to support even before they got on the school committee, I think that the school committee is on the right track to get us out of receivership and really thinking about how accelerated that work has been to be able to get into that second phase of the plan. And so at, at last week's meeting, they also recognized various students that I want to commend for the assay awards from the Quinn-Sigamond Community College, Naya Ortiz, Alexis Ramos, Oscar Vasquez, and they also called attention to Jill Lombardi, one of the teachers who received the Milken Educator Award. I think, you know, even though, you know, that had been mentioned before, I think that bringing all of these different people from our school system, our students, our teachers to a school committee meeting and uplifting their achievements is really important. I also want to bring attention to other people in our community who have been receiving awards lately. Jasmine Quinones from the Kiva Center and who is on our Board of Health recently, really recently received the Ayah Boderosa Award through the Empowering Latina Leaders Affirmation Organization and it's great to see people in our community getting these awards and being recognized for all of the work that they're doing. Deputy Chief Jose Dinghy received the Tri-Community YMCA's George Vassal Award for his commitment to the Cops and Kids Program and I happen to have been on the board of the Tri-Community YMCA with George Vassal and it, you know, it warms my heart that this award is going to Deputy Chief for all of the work that he's done to really, you know, expand and uplift the Cops and Kids Program and all of the work that he does, as you witnessed today on the town manager's substance abuse task force. George Vassal was an incredible member of our community who did so much work, who I can't even name all of the things that, that he did in our community and for our community, but he was such an important person and I, I feel, I'm, you know, I feel happy that the deputy chief is getting recognized and getting this award. I also wanted to talk about the Worcester Community Action Council's Southern Worcester County Community Resource Fair at the YMCA last Thursday. Those will be ongoing resource fairs for our community. We had an abundance, again, we should be really proud of all of the services that our community has to offer our residents and the fire chief was there, lots of different members of our community were there and these resource fairs will be ongoing every other month for residents. It is free, you, you know, can attend. It is in the gym upstairs at the Tri-Community YMCA and really just an opportunity for residents to learn about all that is being offered in our community by all of these different services and organizations. I also wanted to mention for our young people, this Friday will be a teen empowerment night at the Bridge to Hope. It will be an event for youth ages thirteen to eighteen from five to eight PM at Bridge of Hope on Everett Street, two nineteen Everett Street, and it is a collaboration between Stars of the Future and Bridge to Hope, again, for our youth, I know that. Again, for our youth, I know that teen nights at the Y, you know, we miss those, and the students, I'm sure, miss those events at the Y. But here's an opportunity for students to have a safe and empowering place to, you know, to gather together, to play some games. There'll be food, video game tournament, you know, a live DJ, and, you know, other great parts to that event. So please send your students so that they can participate in that great event. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Are you all set?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, happy Saint Patrick's Day, everybody. Glad to see that Councillor Dowell came in, in a bright green T-shirt today. Thank you for the support. But also, I, I'd really like to thank the school committee for all the hard work that they've done in, in moving along in this, in this process and the plan, achieving phase two, that's, that's a big achievement, and hopefully we're moving forward in the right direction. I just, just would say that I still believe that we need to have a target end date, which I still don't have, we don't have from the, from DESI. And I think without the, without the, without the target end date, it's hard to really see where the end, where this ends. But I do commend the school committee for all their hard work. Thank you. I also want to thank Deputy Chief Dinghy for coming today and talking about the Town Manager Substance Abuse Council, and particularly about the opioid funds that we are getting from the state. This is a really important topic. It's important for every community in the, in the Commonwealth. Every community is affected by this, this dread, this opioid disease. It's really at an epidemic level. The, the number of people that have died as a result of this disease makes the number of people that died from COVID almost minuscule. This is, this is, this is taking away young people. It is causing a significant financial burden on communities, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm really happy to hear about all the great things we're doing to try to address this in our own community. So other than that, thank you.
Councillor Bond, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I got to extend my deepest condolences to the finance director and the loss of her husband. We're here for you. Our thoughts and prayers are here for you during this really terrible time. On a lighter note, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Saint Patrick's Day as we welcome in spring this week. Hopefully, the last of the snow is behind us. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention two birthdays tonight. I'd like to wish my wife Ayesha and my stepdaughter Angelina both happy birthday, as they each have birthdays to celebrate next week. So happy birthday, ladies. Love you very much. And got to congratulate the big win tonight for the school committee on their move from phase one to phase two. They did this hard work on their own in the face of what Councillor Shenya said about the receiver not taking questions at the budget presentation, what Councillor Kelly just said about the state still not giving us the timeline at all after moving from phase one to phase two for the exit of receivership, and no response from DESI or the governor or anything from the council's letter of no confidence. So I'm here to, I guess, maybe on my own, as the EHS chairman, continue to expose what's going on here. First of all, when you talk about how many administrators and how much central office has ballooned under Dr. Vilar, you, what you have to understand is any positive information that he tries to come out with data from that office is in the face of a twenty percent decline in enrollment for students since receivership started. But I could dig even deeper in here. Since right before the, the takeover, twenty-six percent, twenty-six point four-three percent, it used to have a thousand eighty-six kids at the middle high school, and now there's only seven hundred and ninety-nine. That's almost three hundred less customers, if you look at this as a business. And how many more managers? Well, we will find out. I told you at the last meeting, I've requested and got a receipt back from the school department that all the positions, the departments, the salaries of administrators in central office, because we need to see just how many cooks are in the kitchen up top and how very few customers we now have. Not to mention that when you're talking about these customers, you're talking about our children. You're talking about a mass exodus from our children and families out of here from receivership, and not just receivership, okay? Because there were, there were a couple of years, two years without Dr. Vilar there. Receivership lowered the attendant, the enrollment, I'm sorry, it lowered the enrollment by just under ten percent, about nine and a half percent for the first two years after receivership. And then since Dr. Vilar's been there, it's gone down an additional nineteen percent in enrollment, okay? So if anybody here in the town or at the school department is trying to tell me that we're better off now than we were nine years ago, absolutely not. There were over a thousand kids in that building when Bill Bishop and Amy Allen left that place to us, and now it is crumbling. Dr. Vilar is the reason. He's not your transitional receiver, and I can't wait to get the information so we can see just how many more administrators, principals, vice principals, directors of this and that, and millions of dollars we need to spend for three hundred less students at the high school, a twenty percent decline in enrollment overall. It's going to be very interesting, because we're struggling to meet the minimum school expenditure here, and we have to cut from town departments. And while we give all this money to Dr. Vilar and central office, he's using it on plenty less people by making huge management positions with lots of money and just letting people go in and out, keep going through the district, keep using Southridge students for their petri dish, for their game. Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item number thirty-four, discussion of next meeting day. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting day is Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM, and also has here, the one after that is April twenty-eighth at seven PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Is the motion adjourned? Motion by Shenya, seconded by Dowell. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Meeting adjourned.